Yeah.
Can you hear me now? I'm at a hundred percent.
Yeah, I hear ya.
The other day I was at fifty. You maybe go down to fifty?
Huh.
I say it a hundred?
Yes. Yeah, sounds good. Alright, so it sounds like we are ready, so whenever... Are you ready Tammy?
Yes.
Okay, whenever you're ready Mark, just let us know.
Okay, I guess, uh, I'm ready. Okay, well, uh...
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay. Well, uh, good evening everybody. Uh, I'd like to call to order the City of Escalon Planning Commission meeting for April fourteenth, twenty twenty. Uh, like to note that today's meeting was conducted by teleconference pursuant to the Brown Act waiver provided for, uh, by Governor Newtham's executive order in response to the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Uh, so, uh, with that, let's start with a virtual flag salute.
Hello, Chair, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would like to present my shirt. So, I have to...
Okay, we will, uh, we will do the flag salute to Sean's shirt. Uh, I pledge allegiance to the flag.
That sounded really bad on my phone.
Dominique and I were in sync. I don't know what happened to the rest of you guys.
So guys, I think what it is, is there's a delay from the telephone to calling in via the internet.
Yeah. Yeah. That's okay, we did it. That's, that's the good part.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, great, thank you. Uh, now we'll have a roll call.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Danzinger?
Here.
Commissioner Willis?
Here.
Commissioner Strowman?
Here.
Vice Chair Castellanos?
On the phone.
Chair Sarkozy?
Here.
Thank you. And then just to note, Diana, are you here still?
Yes, I'm back on.
Alright, Diana Trejo, Assistant Planner on the line. Um, I'm Dominique Romo, Development Services Manager. And then we have Tammy Alcantara, City Manager, present.
Okay, um, I, I guess I'll just, uh, for, to make it official, uh, please note that all cell phones, pagers, and similar devices need to be set to silent or vibrate mode or turned off, uh, unless we have any on-duty emergency responders, uh, online here. Uh, tonight, uh, any presentations? It's none here. Anything to add?
Uh, no presentations.
Okay.
Nothing to add.
Uh... Consent calendar, uh, these items are considered routine in nature and will be approved with one motion. Uh, approval of the minutes from the meeting, uh, of March tenth, twenty twenty. Any commissioners have any comments or corrections?
Chairman Sarkozy, I'm going to abstain from this item as I wasn't here that day.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting of March tenth, twenty twenty.
I will second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Um, I'm just going to go with any opposed, say nay. Okay, motion passed? Is that the appropriate way to do it, uh, Dominique?
Uh, yes, motion passes, uh, for aye and one abstained.
Correct. Okay, um, let's move on to the, uh, public hearing, um, for project application two zero dash seven two one, uh, variance, um, located, uh, at one four 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 First Street Escalon, uh, sixteen ten Weissway Escalon and fifteen eighty Weissway Escalon. Staff report?
Great, thank you very much. Uh, the applicant, uh, of this project currently operates a recreational vehicle sales warranty service center, Referral Auto Group, and proposes interior tenant improvements in an existing building to create additional office space. Um, also exterior improvements include concreting the rear of the property for RV sales and display and onsite stormwater management. Applicants' variance requests are related to reduced off-street parking, reduced landscaping, reduced building facade upgrades, and advertising images on the building. This project is located in our CM zoning district, which is our commercial industrial zoning district. The uses, uh, around, uh, surrounding that property are listed. The findings required for this project are for site and architecture and variance approval. This project qualifies for a CEQA Class One categorical exemption for interior alterations and also a Class Thirty-two categorical exemption for infill development. A little background on the project. These parcels were undeveloped land until nineteen ninety-six when Raymond Greer Construction Company, RGC, applied for a lotline adjustment process, adjusting five existing lots and merging them into three newly adjusted parcels. This was required for the applicant to accommodate the construction of the proposed buildings and prevent them from crossing property lines. Once completed, said applicant obtained building permits and constructed a metal warehouse and maintenance building on the largest of the three parcels to be utilized as a contractor's storage yard. Staff believes the property owner installed chain-link fencing with vinyl slats around the perimeters of the properties at the times these buildings were constructed. In nineteen ninety-eight, the same applicant applied for site plan review before the planning commission to allow for the construction of two additional commercial manufacturing metal buildings, twenty-four hundred square feet and fifty-nine hundred square feet, on the corner of Blix Street and Weissway. These buildings would have under undergone individual tenant improvements once the space was leased. The application was approved with a variance on the rear setback of the fifty-nine hundred square foot building along the railroad track and conditioned to complete all onsite and off-site grading and construction improvements, including curb, gutter, sidewalk paving, driveways, uh, driveway aprons, streetlights, utility undergrounding and relocation, drainage facilities, et cetera, prior to building permit issuance. The public improvements were completed according to the improvement plans. The buildings were not constructed and the site plan approval eventually expired. The same applicant came back to the city in two thousand six with a site plan review process for the planning commission for a project similar to the one proposed in nineteen ninety-eight. Uh, the variations to it were onsite parking and landscaping, but requesting variances on the location of the required onsite parking and trash enclosure. Specifically, the city's regulation for onsite parking required that no more than twenty percent of the required onsite parking be along the front of the parcel, with the remaining to be located on the sides and rear. The applicant proposed fourteen onsite parking spaces in which four were required due to the building's size and use. Six were required for company vehicles and four extra spaces, uh, were developed. The planning commission approved the project and as presented by the applicant, with the added condition that the trash enclosure be constructed as required by the city. Construction did not move forward on this project as well and the site plan review, uh, eventually expired. The city's business license records show that Valley Entry Systems moved into the main parcel with the existing buildings in two thousand seven. It is speculated that Valley Entry replaced a portion of the chain-link vinyl slat fencing around the business at fourteen forty-four First Street, with the wrought iron gate and fencing currently onsite since they specialized in the construction and installation of automatic gates and access control systems for residential, commercial, and industrial properties. In addition, it is more aesthetically pleasing and served as advertisement of their business. Valley Entry occupied the main building facing First Street and the back building continued to be occupied by RGC for storage of their contracting business and equipment. When RGC moved out, Valley Entry expanded their storage workshop in the back building. In two thousand thirteen, Valley Entry Systems relocated their business office onto Main Street, but kept their fencing, storage, workshop in the back building. The three parcels changed ownership in two thousand thirteen and at building per, and a building permit was shortly, uh, issued shortly thereafter to the new property owner for the addition of, of one ADA accessible bathroom. So regarding site and architecture. Referral Auto Group opened for business in the front building at fourteen forty-four First Street in two thousand thirteen. The applicant is currently planning interior tenant improvements to the existing front buildings to create additional office space and exterior improvements, which include concreting the rear of the property for RV sales uh, and display and onsite stormwater management. Pursuant to the municipal code, exterior alterations and additions to a building and intensification of land use require site and architecture approval. For this purpose, intensification is the addition of more than twenty-five percent of existing floor area to a site and all changes in use that require more parking and/or result in an increase in peak hour trip of five or more as determined by the city engineer. Pursuant to EMC seventeen point fifty-four, prior to issuance of a site and architecture approval, it shall be determined that the application applies with the following to the extent and that they are relevant to the particular use. A, the user activity is allowed within the zoning district of the project, uh, site. The site plan is B with the, uh, is consistent with the provision set forth in this chapter, the general plan, and other plans and policies adopted by the city council. C, for building architecture, the building architecture promotes variety through the use of scale, bulk, and building height and features such as facades, projections, offsets, roofs, overhangs, and are an integral part of the design. Two, building architecture makes general, uh, generous use of a variety of building materials, colors, and textures. Three, that building architecture follows a design theme which unifies a group of related buildings while allowing for distinctive features which make similar uses recognizable from each other. And four, building architecture is consistent with the plans and policies adopted by the city council. Uh, letter D is site design. Uh, one, site plan elements, examples, uh, being building circulation and open spaces are arranged on the site so that activities are integrated and harmonious with the neighborhood and surrounding area and are arranged to produce an attractive, efficient, and cohesive development of sustained desirability. That's, uh, these are the ones that apply, so two through five were removed. And number six is driveway and parking systems provide smooth, safe, and convenient movement of vehicles both on and off the site. Seven, contribute to the overall aesthetic quality of the site. Eight, adequate and conveniently located parking is provided and designed in a manner that discourages on-street parking. Nine, transit turnouts, shelters, landscape features, bicycle racks, shopping cart storage areas, newspaper racks, recycling facilities, and trash areas are conveniently located and designed so as not to interfere with the flow of traffic and the safety of vehicles and pedestrians. Ten, there is adequate space for loading and unloading of persons, materials, and goods. Eleven, the pedestrian circulation system is designed to assure that pedestrians can move safely and easily, both on the site and between the properties and activities within the neighborhood. Twelve, incorporates design features to enhance convenience and safety across parking lots and driveways. Uh, thirteen through fourteen are removed. Fifteen, signs complement the architectural theme of buildings and are an integral part of the site design and are consistent with the provisions set forth in this title. Sixteen, the site design contributes to speedy access to all buildings for fire, medical, and police response. And seventeen, the site design incorporates provisions for barrier-free access for the handicapped. Recreational vehicle sales and services and recreational vehicle and equipment storage yards are permitted uses in the commercial, industrial, or the CM zoning district. The project is an existing business looking to expand their existing location. The site plan application is consistent with the city's general plan and the following elements that are applicable. Noise element. Project area is not identified as a noise-sensitive area due to being in a designated commercial area along the railroad tracks. The use is permitted and the noise impact is minimal. Economic development, to encourage a balance of commercial and industrial uses which support a strong and diverse economic base, which provide adequate fiscal revenues and which are compatible with the needs of the community. Commercial areas are encouraged to cluster in identified areas such as the downtown to prevent and discourage strip development. Continue to encourage a balance between a commercial, industrial, and residential uses. In the downtown area, retail, office, financial, government, and professional ser, services shall be encouraged to expand the current business mix and increase the area's economic viability as a destination point for shopping, working, dining, and entertainment. Plan for expansion, expansion of the downtown area on the westerly side of May Street where possible and along First, Second, and Third Street corridors between Main Street and State Route one twenty. The land use element. Ensure the continued viability of Escalon's existing commercial areas. It shall be a priority of the city to develop commercial land on the west and east sides of the community along State Route one twenty. Encourage development of vacant and underutilized infill parcels, particularly those that support pedestrian and other alternative modes of transportation. Community design develop, uh, element. Buildings, landscaping, parking, and other development features should be arranged in a manner that is compatible with the size, scale, and appearance of nearby development. Areas of a site not being utilized for parking, circulation, storage, and other uses shall be landscaped. Ensure that all commercial and industrial development is attractive and of high-quality design to enhance the image of the city. The site plan submitted is designed to allow the applicant to expand the business by paving the undeveloped area of the property along Blix and Weiss as extra display area for additional RV inventory and additional service storage area. The rear area of the property located along Weissway will provide the employees with off-street parking. Our general requirements for commercial districts. Uh, the buildings are, uh, onsite are existing, but staff recommends that the main building exterior fronting, uh, First Street be enhanced in accordance with the site and architecture regulations listed above as well as Chapter seventeen point seventeen, the general requirements for commercial districts. These enhancements relate to the building materials and architectural relief features such as exterior finishes having a combination of at least two materials such as clay, brick, tile, seamless metal, or wood siding, or stucco materials, and that the roof have at least two rooftop elements such as crown molding, tile, or brick, and have at least two horizontal planes. While both buildings could benefit from exterior enhancements in accordance with the municipal code, staff prefers to focus on the main building facing First Street since it is more visible to vehicle and pedestrian traffic. Parking requirements. The existing parking lot for the business is located off First Street in front of the main building and is currently being utilized as a display area for approximately eleven RVs. In discussions with the applicant, staff advised that the parking area is required to be restored as the off-street parking area, uh, for employees and customers. In regards to the number of spaces required, the city's parking requirement for service stations and auto repair and auto service businesses is two parking spaces for each grease rack or working bay plus one parking space for each employee totaling fifteen spaces, uh, for this project. The parking requirement for open sales areas is two parking spaces for each employee totaling fourteen spaces for this project. The front parking lot has ten parking spaces, including one ADA space with loading zone. There is also a paved area between the two existing buildings, also being utilized as a display area, service area for RVs, where no parking is striped or available to the public. The downtown area of Escalon is limited in providing adequate off-street parking. In past years, to assist auto referral group with parking issues affecting their operation and business, the city has installed two-hour parking-only signs for their customers as well as painted a portion of Blix Street's curb red to prevent vehicles from blocking their driveways and business. More recently, the city has sold the area known as Prospect to a, to the new owner of the Escalon Lumber Yard properties with the agreement that they develop it as a public parking area for the surrounding businesses in efforts to assist in the parking needs of the area. The landscape requirements. City's requirements for landscaping applicable to this project are as follows. All trash enclosures, utility meters, electrical transformer, and storage areas shall be screened by plantings and/or acceptable alternatives as approved by the planner. All planter areas adjacent to driveways or parking areas shall be protected by six-inch concrete curbs or other applicable barriers as approved by the planner. In all non-residential districts, a minimum five-foot-wide planter is required along all side and rear property lines. Trees shall be the preferred planting within this planter to provide shade and screening. All landscaped areas shall be provided with permanent automatic sprinklers and other, uh, or other acceptable irrigation systems as approved by the planner. Shade trees and the shading of parking and pedestrian areas should be a major element of any landscape program. Frontage landscaping shall consist of turf, ground cover, shrubs, trees, and boulders in a combination to apply, uh, provide attractive screening. Street trees must be, uh, from the approved city street tree list. Um, for the commercial industrial districts, a minimum of twelve percent of the net la, lot area shall be landscaped and all areas not required for structures or appurtenant uses, parking, or circulation shall be landscaped. And where the frontage and perimeter landscaping requirement does not provide minimum coverage of twelve percent of the net site area, additional landscaping areas in an amount which makes up the difference shall be provided. The variance requests. The applicant's variance requests enumerated below are described in more detail in Exhibit A. They are related to reduced off-street parking, reduced landscaping accommodations, reduced exterior building facade upgrades, or upgrades, and allowing advertising of images on the building. A, to continue the u, uh, to use the front area of the dealership along First Street as display area of new and pre-owned RVs. The applicant would incorporate one ADA compliance spot in this area as shown in the site plan. B, allow employee parking, seven spaces, to be located in the farthest portion of the dealership as shown in the site plan. C, reduce the landscaping requirement from five-feet-wide border landscape planners to thirty-three inches consistent with the existing landscape planners already constructed, deferring the landscape requirements until such time that it can be seen from the street um, as the current fencing screens the landscape planter areas. Uh, D, waive the exterior building architecture and architecture relief features. Requirements of the existing main building. E, allow the applicant to advertise materials on the building's roll-up doors in a mural fashion. Advertisements would change as the business needs changes and would be applied by a professional sign company. In an area that the project, an area that the project may be consistent, inconsistent with the city's general plan is the circulation element, where the intensification of the use may pose concerns related to parking on the street in an area where the city is in need of additional off-street parking. Regarding parking and onsite circulation, the circulation element guides staff to evaluate parking standards and ensure parking requirements are satisfied within walking distance of development so that arterial and collector streets do not separate parking from the demand generator. It also guides staff to facilitate and encourage adequate parking throughout the community, including all commercial areas, and states that all new development provide adequate onsite parking for the onsite areas. The applicant is required, per municipal code, to provide a minimum of fourteen spaces, including the one ADA compliance space with loading zone. As presented, eight spaces total are being proposed for off-street parking, seven employee parking spaces at the rear of the development along Weiss, and the customer, uh, and that customer parking area remain on the street. The applicant has stressed that the parking, uh, that the space already paved and to be paved in the future is needed for the expansion of the business and services including display areas and warranty service area. Currently, the existing ADA space with loading zone is located by the front door of the main building. Since the existing ADA space is currently blocked by the RV storage, uh, dis, display storage, the applicant is proposing that the ADA space be relocated to the right of the main gate when entering First Street parking area. The applicant's proposed ADA parking space relocation is not feasible. In accordance with current ADA laws, accessible, accessible parking spaces must be located on the shortest accessible route of travel to an accessible facility entrance. Where buildings have multiple accessible entrances with adjacent parking, the accessible parking spaces must be dispersed and located closest to the accessible entrances. Therefore, when accessible parking spaces are added into an existing parking lot, they must be located on the most ground, uh, most level ground close to the accessible entrance. An accessible route must always be provided from the accessible parking to the accessible entrance. Staff is recommending a condition requiring that the ADA space meet current state law requirements, which will alter this applicant's site plan proposal to accommodate that. Um, and since the staff report, we have made some updates to this and we can let you know that, uh, as, uh, when we get into discussion. Um, according to the municipal code, a minimum five-foot-wide landscape planter is required along the side and rear property lines of all new commercial projects. The planning commission, in a past application on this property, approved thirty-three-inch wide landscape planters. The existing wrought iron and chain-link vinyl slat fencing currently encloses the landscape planners from public view. The two existing metal buildings were constructed in nineteen ninety-six and were not subject to site and architecture approval processes at the time. The city's regulations regarding aesthetics, including exterior building materials and architectural features in the commercial and industrial districts, have improved and progressed over the years. The city's regulations intend to protect the integrity and character of the residential, commercial, and industrial areas of the city by providing the city with the opportunity to review detailed plans and establish alternative site development standards. In doing so, the city achieves the goal of quality design and proper siding of structures, complementing the city environment while developing commercial centers that are compatible in scale with the residential character of the city. The applicant requests to add advertisement materials to the building's roll-up doors and describes it would look like a mural. Definition-wise, murals are usually paintings that depict the history of the community and surrounding areas and are not usually changed or updated. The type of art or photography displayed the applicant is proposing is not clearly identified in the city's sign ordinance. However, if the planning commission agreed to allow this activity as a part of the business, staff recommends taking into consideration the words, the sizing of the letters, and the continuous maintenance that should be required. Currently, posters, placards, announcements, advertising, and similar signs that are erected on any fence, pole, tree, pavement, wall, bus stop, bench, or any other object in or upon a public highway, public street, or public rideaway are identified as prohibited signs in the municipal code. Um, below this is the, uh, findings required for a variance, which include that there are special circumstances applicable to the subject property or to the intended case, which do not generally apply to other properties in the same vicinity and under identical zone classifications, that the special circumstances relate to the property or use, not the financial or other personal condition of the applicant, nor to any self-imposed condition on the property that is the result of actions taken by the present owner or his predecessor, that the granting of a variance shall not constitute a grant of special privilege inconsistent with the limitations upon other property in the vicinity and the same zone classification, that the result would not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, or materially injurious to properties or improvements in the vicinity. Regarding public outreach, um, our public hearing notice appeared in the Escalon Times newspaper on April first, twenty twenty. On April second, twenty twenty, a notice of public hearing was mailed out to every property owner and occupant within three hundred feet of the subject site as noted in the latest accessor, uh, assessors' records. We did update that notice to provide information on signing on to the meeting uh, via teleconferencing as well as a call-in number. Staff did not receive any responses from the public hearing notice. Responses received by other departments are attached to the staff report or incorporated... Responses received by other departments are attached to the staff report or incorporated into the conditions of approval. The planning commission's decision will begin a ten-business-day appeal period. During which the commission's action may be appealed to the city council or called up by council by a council member. Which would expire at five PM on April twenty-eighth twenty twenty. If approved and there is no appeal filed within that period, the applicant may proceed with the project. If denied and no appeal appeal is filed, a decision of the planning commission is final. The current cost to file an appeal is six hundred and twenty-six dollars. Staff has reviewed the comments received from all agencies and has put together the following items to serve as the proposed conditions of approval. Staff recommends that the planning commission review and approve them pending any modifications they may seek to include and or remove. So our recommendation. Uh one is to open the public hearing and take any public testimony on the project. Close the public hearing. Make the findings as required per section seventeen point fifty-four Sight and Architecture and seventeen point fifty-seven Variances. Find the project uh exempt under the sequoia classifications listed and authorize staff to file the notice of exemption. And to approve the application with the conditions of approval as proposed below or as modified by the planning commission. Um so we have our specific conditions listed. Um the approval itself, uh we have listed each of the items uh that were requested uh for variances. Um then we also have the uh variance permit validity. And these could be modified as as determined by the planning commission. The comments regarding site plan, grading, landscaping and lighting. Um are all out of development services, either the engineering department, city engineer or our municipal code through planning. And then we have our list of standard conditions uh which typically apply to just about every project, the use of property, use limitation, change in occupancy, hold harmless. Uh requirements for building permit permits, compliance with conditions and maintenance and hazardous materials. Um and if you have any questions regarding this project. Uh I am here, Diana's on the line and we could go through it. We also have Tony Ferkin on the line who is the owner, business owner. Um that is proposing this project, an applicant. Um if there's any questions, please let us know. If you guys are still awake.
Yeah, that was a long one. Thank you, Dominique.
You're welcome.
Um. Um I'm just thinking my mind's eye of how we sit so um before we open up to public uh hearing, uh any. Any comments or questions from the commissioners? So maybe we'll start with Commissioner Danzinger?
Uh I'd like to thank staff for uh really well put together uh agenda here. And uh for Mr. Ferkin uh to have addressed uh some of the concerns that uh we're gonna have for the variance. Um I I have a couple of questions. Uh one was regarding the police and fire department. They they didn't make any comments?
You said the police department?
The police or fire, uh you said were were given this uh this application and they had no comment?
Um no, if there are no comments listed in here, then they did not rec- then they did not uh provide us any comments.
Okay. Um the one real big concern I have is the uh mural or or whatever's gonna be on the wall. Hard to uh review if nothing's there and to make the decision uh not not based on that. So I'm I'm curious as to why that's gonna be on tonight's agenda. Uh yeah, I I I don't know how to respond to that one way or the other without having to see it. Uh we've had a couple of murals in town, obviously one of the ice cream parlor uh that went up kind of on its own and the other was the uh. Uh antique bu- business uh over there on Main Street. And uh where they did the whole building so uh those kinds, one was not proposed and the other one was proposed though in this case uh. The idea of of looking at a mural there, I I think I'd like to see it before I make any comments.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Danzinger. Uh Commissioner Castellanos?
Uh yeah, I have one question for staff. You said that there was some additional changes or modifications? Since this uh this went out, what what were they?
So regarding the ADA spot that was uh originally proposed in the site plan. Um because the applicant sees that that spot as proposed would not meet state uh compliance for ADA. Um we have uh he has a um appointment or inspection scheduled for Thursday with a CASP inspector. Uh to review his property and discuss how they would go about providing a. A state compliant ADA parking spot on the property. Um so the ADA spot, and that's why we wrote it into the conditions that way, is required to meet state compliance but. Might not necessarily be in the or will not be in the area that it is currently on the site plan. Uh but it will be required to meet state requirements.
All right, and then the other question was the proposed mezzanine addition, there's. No plans or anything on what that's gonna look like? The material that's gonna be made out of or did I miss it somewhere?
So those are interior improvements. Um those themselves uh. They're listed in the description of the project, but the but the interior improvements are not required of. To have planning commission commission approval because the building itself is already constructed. And so he has the area in there and is basically going to install. Uh a stairway and add private office space on the second floor, so he'll be submitting plans for those separately with a building permit. And go for plan review on that.
Okay, so, okay, so all he's doing is is just adding a mezzanine to the existing building, eh?
Uh yes, it's gonna be all interior uh for the mezzanine, correct. He'll he'll be adding. Uh additional office space upstairs for employees only.
Okay, so he's not ad- actually adding more coverage to the.
Uh no increase in square footage, no.
Okay, okay.
Or I guess I should say in um. In in. The this the space, correct.
I I have no other comments at this point.
Okay.
Or questions?
Okay, uh thank you. Commissioner Willis, any comments?
I have two questions for staff. One, um I noticed the curb around the fire hydrant is not painted red. Is there a reason for that?
I don't think so. I'm not sure.
Right there on the top?
We're going through the pictures right here.
The one you just had of. Right there.
Oh, there it is, yeah.
There we go.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
The mansion is made of the uh inability to park on First Street and I was just curious why that wasn't red, I think.
It should be, it should be, yeah, we I would think it should be, yeah.
We'll make a note in public works about it. Maybe it's just an oversight, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Second question is, will the applicant be talking tonight?
They they're um, the applicant is on the line. Uh yes, the applicant is on the line, so once you guys finish with your comments um and we open the public hearing, uh he can go ahead and speak about the project.
Okay, that's all I have for staff.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Willis. Uh Commissioner Strowman?
Uh yes, so good evening, uh fellow commissioners. Couple of questions that I have in, first question for staff is. Uh back when the original thirty-three inch uh planter bed was uh granted by the previous planning commission. Where exactly was that located? Do we have any idea?
Um so it's currently existing on the properties, um. But it is hard to tell in the pictures because the fencing along the property was put on the outside of the landscaping along the sidewalk. Um and we usually see the landscaping on the outside of the fencing. And the fencing behind the landscaping, but that this picture that Tammy has pulled up is the thirty-three inch. Uh landscape planters.
So is the fence, is the existing fence set on the property line?
Uh technically, technically, yes.
Okay, but I guess my question is. Is is that uh is the existing fence within the current city easement?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Which is.
Uh.
It's behind the sidewalk. But it's, yeah, but it's in the easement behind the sidewalk.
Okay, cause I um I was uh while while we're going through here, I'm also looking at Google Earth and. I mean, I don't, I mean, yeah, we can and maybe I'm jumping the gun here, but. You know, we could force them to do the landscaping, but who's gonna see it because it's all behind the fence? I don't think you would you would ever see it. So, um but I'm just trying to follow that that mind or that way of thinking. Um the other thing is, and obviously we can continue, uh but um. I guess in hearing that the applicant may be having a CASP inspection on Thursday. I I have been through some CASP inspections before and as as our city manager and I'm sure Diana and uh. Dominique have been through as well as our uh Chair Sarkozy. And. I think that the CASP inspection on Thursday is going to open a lot of the eyes of the applicant. Uh and I I believe, I mean, we can definitely continue discussing this, but I believe that. A lot of the concerns that are being raised about uh variances, et cetera, et cetera. May be resolved uh during the CASP inspection on Thursday. For example, um just discussing path of travel. So um and again, I I apologize if I'm getting ahead of us here. But and please tell me to stop if I'm going too far. But in looking at the aerial view of the very front parking. Um I don't see an accessible path of travel anywhere currently in that front parking lot. It doesn't matter if you put it where the applicant is proposing or you put it as close to the building as possible. There is no drive aisle, there's no, we don't have five feet of clearance on either side of these uh these current RVs. And I think the CASP inspector is going to raise a lot of issues on that very front parking lot. Which is exactly what is before us as the planning commissioner should make a decision on a variance tonight. So um I guess that's my question for staff is. We can go through this process and talk about variances and denials, um but ultimately, a- as we all know. ADA trumps everything, so. Um do we do we continue to talk about these variances or can we issue uh our decision pending the the final review of the CASP inspector? Uh because I I have a feeling that that is going to raise. A lot of issues that may end up being in conflict with what we decide this evening as planning commissioners.
Um so yes, the the conditions of approval were were written to require that that one ADA parking space be compliant with state law. Um currently, it was proposed in that area which which. The applicant has talked with staff and and that area because it doesn't work out, um speci- that specific space as presented doesn't work out. Um they're going to be looking into other options. Uh the applicant is actually interested in put relocating it to the other parking areas. There's an area between the two buildings that he has a door um available to to the building. Um and so that's where that CASP inspection uh or inspector will try to assist. Um and we're hopeful that we'll be able to come come to uh something there, but obviously we need somebody that that knows that. Regulation uh much better than staff does. Um and when and when the applicant has him at the location, he'll be able to show him the other areas that are available for that parking space and hopefully they'll be able to work that out.
But Dominique, what I guess what I'm saying is that the California Accessibility Code says that you can't. Ex- you can exclude somebody for accessibility to an alternate location that is. Where or to a location that would be be being an alternate location that is not accessible to everybody else. So if the applicant's main business entrance is off of First Street, that means he is required to have the ADA accessible parking stall along First Street. And that's, I guess what I'm saying is going through the staff report is. We're being asked to make decisions on variances related to the very front parking lot that. All of our decisions regarding variances may go away or maybe um in conflict. With what the CASP inspector decides on Thursday. So, um those are just my thoughts.
Okay, yeah, I mean unfortunately, um we we won't know that information and until he has his CASP inspection. Um that that whole area up front is currently being used for the RVs, so you know, the the public isn't actually parking in there, they'll be on the street. And so I'm not sure if that would change anything. Um and then he'd also have that back area where the employees are parking. Um I'm not sure if, you know, putting the spot in that area would change anything, I mean, it's it's just something that we'll have to have the actual inspector. Um. Review and and maybe provide some guidance or options for the applicant. And see what we can get from there.
I won't, I won't belabor this point anymore, I guess, but my point is that. What happens if we make these decisions and there is a conflict between the decisions that are made tonight between the by the p- planning commission? And what is um discovered by the CASP inspector on Thursday? Then is the applicant going to come back a second time to the plan- uh planning commission with another application, with a revised application and say. Okay, I have to go through the process yet again because through my CASP inspection, I have come to find out that now they're requiring me to do all of these ADA upgrades. Um and then is the applicant going to have to fill out the application again and go through this whole process yet again?
So if the if the changes uh to to his project um are minor, um. As defined, how however, our municipal code uh does have an area in there that that determines what what types of changes are minor and what types of changes are major. Um if they're minor changes, um we could make those here at staff level and I can approve those um along with our city engineer. Building official, uh you know, whoever whoever is required to make that determination. And then we can advise the planning commission of those changes. But yes, if that if the changes are considered major in accordance with the municipal code, then we would bring them back. At the next planning commission meeting for your review and approval.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um so uh yeah, I certainly echo um Commissioner Strowman's. Concerns about uh maybe getting ahead of ourselves based on what the inspection's gonna reveal. Um but my uh only other question would be um the off-street parking on or off-property parking on Prospect? Is there any indication when that might um be done?
Uh the agreement is is moving forward and that agreement uh gives the property owner approximately twenty-four months to complete. And it is phased, there are three phases to the project and I believe that is the.
The first phase, yeah.
So it it should be in as phase one, but he has twenty-four months to complete the entire project.
Okay. Okay, thank you. That was a a very thorough report, I appreciate it.
No problem.
Okay, um with that, why don't we open uh open up the meeting uh to the public? Okay, um, with that, why don't we open, uh, open up the meeting, uh, to the, uh, public? Public comment, if I get on the right page here, sorry. Uh, so it's seven fifty-five and is there any, um. Any public comment that someone would like to, um, discuss? If the applicant is there, um, please state your name and address.
Good evening, my name's Tony Ferking, address fourteen forty-four First Street.
Okay, thank you. Uh, also, uh, appreciate all the work you've, you've put in, um, to your, to your project. And appreciate the business that you're bringing to the, uh, to the city. Um, for, uh, questions from the commissioners? Um, why don't we start, uh, at the other end in my virtual bench here? Uh, Commissioner Strowman, do you have any questions for the applicant?
I would like to hear from my other fellow commissioners before I comment. That's not possible.
He defers.
I defer to Danny.
Okay, uh, let's see, Commissioner Willis?
Is it possible to hear, to hear Tony make a presentation first?
Sure, that's fine.
Certainly.
Well, first of all, I, I wanna say thank you and, and our, our goal here is to continue to be a productive, positive and contributing. Uh, business to our community as we've put a big importance on so far. Um, we're doing our best to stay in the location. When we came here in two thousand thirteen, we did all pre-owned RVs. This company has grown to a point, uh, being, you know, part of a great community, uh, that we never saw it going to. So, we're doing our best to, uh, stay in the current location, but, um. Still be positive. So what we've done is I've pulled a report of all of our current clients in the Escalon, City of Escalon. We have fifty-five that we have done business with. And just took ten of them and called and, and got their feedback and all were very in favor of our future plans moving forward. To include the, uh, type of parking that we're proposing. I also went to all surrounding businesses, Escalon Transmission, Lead Window Ten, All Same Thing Designs, talked to all the owners personally. They are also in favor and say that we don't, uh, cause any nuisance to the area. Um, I also went across the street to Andy, talked with him. He is, he is also on board and enjoy having us there and Arturo Armaz that resides at sixteen fifty, uh, Wees Way. I spoke with him and he is also, um, in, you know, favor of what we're doing. I, I am very, um, astute in having the best-looking business that I can. And providing a great experience for our client base coming in and it shows in our reviews. So, doing this project, I know it's, it's not the, lack of better terms, the optimal piece of property. But I feel I'm in the optimal company that I wanna be in. So, with that, we've proposed this project and hoping to move forward as planned with regards to the ADA spot. Not knowing, you know, this, this, we're kinda new at this, so not knowing the, exactly the ADA requirements. And not being able to put it up in that front corner. It is currently by the front door. The problem I see with leaving it in its existing spot, opening up the center, coming all the way down in the center. And still keeping sight on what we're trying to do with that front area. They would have to come all the way down the center in between RVs and make a right into that spot. That spite that I see is having other public come off the street and come down that center aisle and block that spot. The other thing that I see is them coming out of that spot trying to turn, they have to back all the way back out on the First Street. So, what we've done, I've talked with my architect, um, using Norm Wilson, uh, out of Modesto. And I have another site plan sitting in front of me, I just didn't have time to get it over to you. Was putting it in between the two buildings and having, we've always had two entrances. So the thing of, of having this inspection and, you know, not having it open to them. We'll see what they come back with and the feedback I get on Thursday. But putting that ADA spot, um, right at our back roll-up door, coming into that front building, which is our existing inside showroom. So, if that is, and our architect says that that would be compliant and, uh, placing it there. So, that's what we're trying to do with the, with the movement of that ADA spot. As far as the interior offices, there's already existing mezzanine that was built with the building. In the, in the, uh, plans that were available, they were gonna do three-quarter inch flooring, they went to inch and an eighth flooring. And there's definitely the, uh, strength to do the private offices that we're trying to do to accommodate, um, more staff. And, and needed office space in order to make this growth. And the back building in that extra lot, we're looking to bring in more. Inventory as well as service. What we're trying to do as well is when we get deliveries from the factory, they come down Blix right now and drop them there. And we're very prompt at getting them moved off the street, cause that's where we bring them in from the transporter. They will then have a drop-off lane in the back, so they'll come in on Wees and Wyser. I'm probably not saying that right, but come in the back gate and drop off right where the cursor is, pull straight in there. Drop off and we'll have a drop-off and pickup lane, not only for them, but for service. So we'll no longer have any RVs on the streets coming down Blix. Um. We're trying our best to, to keep this very accommodating to not only patrons, but, um, everybody around in the area, so. With that said, that's kinda the, the project as a whole. We're just trying to scale the company to where it needs to go. Um, we've currently have closed gross receipts of three point six million last year. With the projected, we look at in a three-year period, bring that just under ten million. And that's, that's kinda what I got for you.
Thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, Commissioner Willis, did you, uh, after hearing that, did you have any comments, questions?
I do have a few questions. Um, Tony, I see you sell, uh, new and pre-owned RVs, you sell in consignments too?
I do not, we used to. When we first moved in in two thousand thirteen, I was covering areas from Arizona as, as high up as Washington, as far east as Colorado, only doing pre-owned RVs. Since then, we've made the transition to pretty much doing all brand-new. We may have one or two pre-owned at any given time that may have came in on trade-in, but we're not seeking those out. We're mainly going all brand-new. Consignment we did away with just because, um, I came from real estate and now I say I'm in real estate. So, it, it, uh, I, I, it was kind of a transaction that was a little tough. You're going between a seller and a buyer with them not having to face each other, they get a little gutsy on each end, it just wasn't a good viable. Um, addition to our, what we're doing and it took up space and the profitability wasn't there, so we did do away with consignments.
Okay, second question, how much inventory do you see added?
I see where we could, we could add about fifteen to eighteen units of inventory and still have space to keep all four bays working in our service department.
Okay.
So, we'll incre- oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
We'll increase from approximately forty units at any given time right now. Um, we're probably gonna, I'm gonna try and take that upwards to sixty units. We'll just see how it goes, it's kinda hard to, to imagine them back there. Um, if the, the space does get swallowed pretty fast.
Okay, I'm just going down the list here of items and the second one is allow the employee parking in the back. And having worked with many businesses where the employees were encouraged to park in the rear. I like that you're, uh, doing that and letting your customers have a, have a closer access. Um, the landscaping? I have difficulty with the RVs being in the front of the building on First Street. Um, that's one of the reasons you can't see the landscaping and it's attractive landscaping. Is there any possibility that you would turn that front parking lot solely to customer parking and put all of your, uh, wares behind?
I would love to, the problem is, is if I moved all those RVs to the back. I would do no, I would, I wouldn't be doing any good by purchasing this property, shifting RVs. I wouldn't be able to gain and justify the purchase. So what we're trying to do is we are purchasing all three parcels here, doing the site improvements. And if I was to give up that amount of inventory and move it to the back. I don't see where I could keep up with the, the extra cost of owning this building versus leasing it.
Okay, I guess when I drive by and I see all the big RVs, I'm not drawn into the building. Whereas I think if it were vehicles and customers and, you know, I could see the building, I think I might be drawn in more. But that's.
And, and, and I, I get that and it's, and some people say, man, I had a hard time finding the front door. And, and not very often, but the, the truth of the matter is, we're kinda the destination, people are coming there, we know they're coming. We're not really that drive-by business, we get the same people driving by every day.
Exactly, exactly. As far as the exterior building, uh, architecture and whatnot, are there any items on the building that need repair? Is there a leaky roof, is there something that might require some alterations that are proposed here?
Nothing, um, the, the building is in, I mean, one of the roll-up doors on the service bay had, uh, broke and cut loose. So, um, the current owner, Jeff Hogan, went ahead and replaced the panels. And, um, that's why we presented putting advertising on the front of those doors. And, and when I, when I said in a mural-like fashion, I probably said it wrong. It's gonna be more of a photograph. So what I'm trying to do is when those doors are dropped, attracts people's attention, driving by that, oh, look, it'd almost be a picture of a. An RV sitting in, in maybe the bay, getting in a nice clean service shop bay. And, and almost like it's a window looking into the shop or, or just to attract attention as to what's going on. Um, I've heard people think that we're an RV storage, we've heard just about everything. But we are very unique and that's why we have, you know, five-star reviews on every website. Um, and we're very personable and we're, we've been referred to as the RV boutique. And, uh, we don't wanna get big, I can, I can go buy a big property, I can put a thousand units out there, but I would lose. I would lose, um. The, uh, shaking hands with every one of my clients and as an owner, I require that.
Okay, and this might be the last issue, um, the murals, I thought I read that they were just gonna be on the second building, but you want them on the front building too?
You know, and, and just having the option, and I don't know if I'll even do it at all, I just put it in there as, as, you know, coming forward is. With this project, just saying, hey, if I can do, you know, and, and there are ones that I wanna be able to peel off quickly. They wouldn't be permanent, it'd be almost like a wrap of some sort to advertise our lifetime warranty. All of our RVs have a lifetime warranty, advertising that. Um, promotions, certain sales, time of the year, just, you know, people paint their storefront windows. I'm looking at more or less, it would be nothing of cartoon-like or graffiti look. It would be more of a photograph or a very professional, kinda sporty, um. Appeal, you know, it's, uh, we're trying to bring a fresher, um, approach to RV sales. Seems like RV sales have kinda gone to, um, there's, there's no one thinking of the new wave, we're always trying to be innovative and, and just, you know. We have a lot of younger clients and, and just trying to keep it appealing to them.
Okay, but if there are murals on the front doors, I'm not sure they're gonna be visible because of the RVs. But on the second doors, as you go down Blix, you can see those doors. In fact, today there was an RV that had a bear on it silverback. I wonder if that type of mural is what you were thinking?
That or different brands we're carrying and, and, and that. But as you walk into the front display area and you're approaching the door, a lot of times we have those doors raised. I've even thought of putting a, um, glass front and bringing down the doors. They have glass panels to almost make it a window into there and bringing the roll-up doors down to touch the top of those. You know, just to make it so they can see the indoor showroom that we keep mopped and clean during harvest, that would help keep the dust out. I'm extremely picky, if you come down and see our shop, you'll see it, um, I got a ten-year-old truck that has never had anything in the door pockets. It's just the way I am and, and I run the business the same way. We mop it daily, we blow off the lot daily. And having those murals on the door to me when they walk up would catch our eye, they would not be as visible, you're right, I totally agree. But at least it would be something that would kinda update it and make it peppy, colorful. I like color, I don't like balloons, I don't like the cheesy flags, I don't like the used car sales feel. I'm just trying to keep it more updated and inviting.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have at this time.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, uh. Uh, thank you, Commissioner, uh, Willis, um, Commissioner Ken Stellanos?
Um, yeah, uh, Anthony, I have, I have one, uh, question. Um, a couple of years ago, uh, signage was a really hot item in this town. And so my question is, um, the only sign that you are proposing are these, what you would call. Murals or photographs on your, uh, roll-up doors? Are you gonna have, uh, like, uh, a post sign somewhere?
You know, at this time, I don't have any plans for that, I thought about across the back of the building of the service shop where we have two roll-up doors. Um, you know, in the future, I, I have these grand ideas of adding roll-up doors to the back. That way if I fill that middle lot, uh, up with more display trailers. Um, we can still continue to access the entire building footprint from that other side. And maybe adding a sign above that so that people, you know, driving down the highway can see it. Um, we do, and I, and I realize, uh, greatly that we do lose a lot of business, but that's okay with me, not being on a main drag. But maybe having people see that, you know, RV service warranty repair or something across, um, the back of the building. Has been a thought of mine as well, but, you know, again, I will, I will comply with whatever regulations are set forward and, and stick with those.
Well, I, I, I like to hear that you wanna stick around the town and improve that, uh. You know, that, uh, your site to make it, you know, more, you know, a hundred percent functional. It's just that, you know, the signage issue has been, was a hot topic and, you know. I'm sure Dominique and, uh, exterior in the right direction. So, uh, if you decide to put some signage up that, uh, it would meet the city requirements, but, uh.
Sure, and, and signage, it, it's not a real hot topic with me. So I wouldn't, I, if I couldn't add any signs, that wouldn't alter my thoughts of this project at all.
Okay, alright, I, I, Chairman, I don't have any other questions.
Okay, uh, thank you, Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Danzinger?
Sir, are you there?
Is your mute on?
Yeah, I'm sorry, uh, uh, thank you. Um, I'm, I was looking at the picture here that's on the screen and, uh, during the week, uh, murals really wouldn't be an issue, cause you wouldn't see them. Uh, they, because we don't get a, a, a look at these murals now, it's, like I said before, it's too hard to comment. I would, uh, just defer to staff to make, uh, the call on that. Uh, with our current sign ordinance, uh, in mind and, and knowing what's transpired in the city. That's, I have no way of being able to say yea or nay to, uh, something I can't see. Uh, as far as ADA goes, I defer to, uh, Commissioner Strowman. Um, I know that, uh, in driving around the area there, there's. There's questionable, you know, ADA's anyway at the Portuguese Center. The ADA is, um, along First Street in the back of the build, in the middle of the south side of the building. So whoever, uh, is utilizing that spot has to go around to the front as well. And, uh, so, again, I leave that up to, you know, whatever the state person's gonna say. Uh, I looked at the landscaping, I agree with, uh, Mr. Birking. Uh, you, you can't see anything with the slat. Um, it, the, the appearance of the building appears to be in better shape than, uh, everything that goes west. And, uh, north. Uh, I think the only thing that would really outdo it is the, uh, coal, uh, uh, lumberyard and the Portuguese pole, uh, currently. But, uh, again, I, I, I really don't have any other questions other than, you know, what those murals could look like.
You know, you know, sir, I don't, I don't have any plans for the murals and like you said, when the doors are open. Open, um, I, I don't know, I don't know that I'll even do them. It was just when they're dropped and were closed and you go by a closed business and you're going, wow, that's pretty cool. You know, kinda attracts your eye in there and that's all I was going out with that. But, again, it's, it's not a high point, it's not where my funds are gonna go immediately, um, or even be an immediate thought. As far as, you know, our, the condition of our building versus surrounding buildings, I do agree that it, it, it's a, it's a good-looking building and in good shape. Currently, um, you know, our landscaping around the front is in fantastic shape. Going around in the inside of that slat fence, nobody will see it and I hate to put sprinkler system in and, and dump the water on something nobody's seeing. And I, I don't, I don't need to see it when we're in the back there working. And currently, I don't know if you've driven by, uh, the other establishment across the street, but there's weeds about eight inches tall growing through all the cracks of the concrete. The place to me looks abandoned, so it's just, we're, we do our best to keep. So it's just, we're, we do our best to keep that place as clean as possible and as, as, uh, presentable. And, um, it won't change. It'll only get better if, uh, if we end up purchasing the building.
Uh, I have a question, uh, for staff. Um, if we were to remove the, uh, uh, the signage portion tonight, can they address that? Would they have to address that through the planning commission or could they go through, uh, the city, uh, planning department, uh, is a separate issue?
Um, the way the current sign ordinance is, is written, uh, depending on what he would submit, um, if it meets sign ordinance, uh, regulations, uh, and staff's ability to apply it, um, as best we can to what's existing in the code, uh, we would be able to approve it at staff level. But if it has anything that's considered enhanced, uh, in accordance with our sign ordinance, then it would need to go to planning commission for approval. Um, we also do have the sign ordinance, uh, update. Uh, still something that staff has, is going to be working on and hopefully trying to get completed by the end of this, uh, fiscal year. Um, so there, there will be updates coming, uh, to the planning commission, uh, to be able to make some changes to the ordinance. Um, but as it's currently written, anything that's enhanced would need to go to planning commission.
So, uh, could we, uh, rule on this, uh, application tonight and, and not allow signage uh, at this point without causing another variance, uh, submittable to be, uh, supplied?
Uh, yes, yeah. If, if that portion of the project, um, is not, uh, approved or is not granted the variance, um, we would just process it as a regular sign application. Um, and then if it needs to go to planning commission, it would go to planning commission.
Uh, Mr. Birkin, are you okay with that?
I am a hundred percent okay with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, thank you, Commissioner Danzinger. Uh, so I'll go, I'll go next. Um, so thank you, Tony, for a good, uh, presentation again. Um, as I'm just going through the approvals, um, A through E, it seems like the ADA issue is going to get worked out with the inspection and it may or may not lead to being able to store, uh, RVs on there. Just looking at the, looking at the lot, it looks pretty typical of RV sales where you kinda have to navigate, uh, navigate through a bunch of RVs to get anywhere. So it's, um, it's, it's about average to what I've seen at, at other RV places. So, the, uh, the landscape border, um, I don't have any issue with, uh, keeping it the thirty-three inches. It's, it looks, like you said, is good or, good or better than anything else around. Um, the buildings, they look, I mean, they look very good for what, for what they are. Um, I have no doubt you keep it in, in good condition. It looks great. Uh, and then the, the, for the murals, uh, un- unfortunately, when you use the word mural, it, it raises a lot of, uh, a lot of red flags. So, uh, I, I agree with Commissioner Danzinger that, uh, that's something we would wanna just pull off and, and deal with and you could deal with separately with the city. Um, so I, I think it's a great, uh, great project for the city. Uh, and if your sales goals are, uh, I mean, that, that's ambitious, but if that's accurate, um, wow, congratulations to you. That's wonderful.
Thank you. And a lot of that number's gonna come from service as well. We really didn't do a, we, we, uh, satisfied the warranty, uh, repairs for our clients took in a little bit outside. But since I've hired a service manager that is heading up the entire service department, we're now hiring and looking for another technician. And we're gonna increase, that's where a large increase is gonna come from as well as the, um, additional pieces of inventory. But that service department just working very conservative numbers through our SBA loan with the SBA and, 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 um, bought in by the SBA. Those are pretty conservative numbers and I think we can hit it. And we've continuously grown with the spot that we've had. We play Tetris down there daily. And it's, um, um, it's kind of a labor of love. So I, I truly think that with what we've got and that the systems we've put in place and the improvements we made, that we will achieve those numbers.
Okay, thank you. I, and I just, one, one more question for, for staff. Um, the, the fire department didn't have any comments about, um, the amount of the, the storage in the front, the front lot and access to the building and such?
Um, I don't have anything indicated in the staff report. Um, Diana, did you speak with anybody in the fire department?
We, we did not get any comments from the fire department.
Okay, well, then there was no comments from them. Okay, uh, thank you. That's, uh, that, that's all for me. Uh, Commissioner Strowman, we're back to you.
All right, thank you, Chair. Um, Tony, thanks for taking the time to meet with us this evening. Um, especially kind of virtually as we're all in this shelter in place. Um, to kind of go along with what Commissioner Willis said. Um, we definitely wanna support your business, but could you make it work where you could do a hybrid approach? And pull half of the units out on the front and move them to the back? Uh, just to allow for some customer parking that doesn't have to do with service? And so instead of currently having eleven units on the front, maybe have five or six and then the rest in the back?
Commissioner, the only, the only problem I see with that is DMV requirements as well. Um, I am losing up the one side where the parking is, is very prominent. And that if, if I only did half, we went out there with a tape measure. If I only did half, 'cause I, I, I really wanted to work with the, with the request, they would have to, no matter which way they came in, back, back out. There's no way to get them to turn around. They would almost be very cramped to back, back out on the first street. And I just see potential problems with that because by the time you clear the gate, your trunk's already out in that lane. And I just think it would, it would cause a very dangerous situation.
Okay, so I guess my question for staff is, where is, and, and only 'cause staff has the cursor. Where is the current ADA stall, um, onsite?
The current ADA stall that's striped, yes, is, is right along in, in that area where, where the cursor is. That's, that's what's currently striped, um, that has the RV parking. And then you have the, the site plan of where it was originally proposed. And then that's going to be changing as well.
Okay, so Tony, I am by no means an ADA expert. So please don't take this for, I just take this at face value. Um, but I guess before I tell you what I'm going to tell you is, where did you find this CASP inspector?
Actually, I could answer that for Tony. Um, we actually, uh, the city, um, collects money, uh, regarding ADA, um, compliance. And in the past two to three years, we send out a letter to businesses in town offering CASP inspections. So we take that money that's collected, uh, through business license applications and we put it into that program. So, uh, we, we send out letters to businesses offering CASP inspections. The last round that we did that was maybe about a year and a half, two years ago. And we had about five businesses call in to get their CASP inspection and we utilize that money. Um, we do have money in that account and we do intend to put it out to businesses again. Uh, but we have offered to use that money towards his project because he is a business in town and that's who it's for. So our building official, who is also a certified CASP inspector, will, will be conducting that inspection for him.
Okay, that makes me feel a little bit better as opposed to some Joe Schmo coming in from somewhere. Um, but it's been my experience that, um, CASP inspections are very eye-opening, uh, on a number of different levels. Um, is your architect currently on the call? I think I see him on the list of attendees.
He is not.
Okay, so, um,
No, I'm on, Tony.
Oh, hey, Norm.
Hi, Norm. Norm, this is Sean Strowman from the planning commission. So if you move your, if you move the, the accessible stall to, um, the opposite side of the building, like between buildings A and building B, what is your path of travel to get to that front parking area for accessibility into those stalls?
Well, actually, what would be happening is, is, which is, hasn't been described real well, but the, the parking, actually, the front of his building is actually from the back. That's where people come in. And so that become, will become the front entry to the building and the parking for, for the public. And so he can place a, an accessible stall there, enter the building there, uh, because it's all at ground level. So once he's at the building or in the building, um, they, he, they become at the front entrance.
Okay, so maybe what would help, Tony, I'm just thinking outside, just trying to go through all of the anticipated what CASP is gonna throw at you. Um, maybe what you do is right there where the Curtis cursor is, is, um, you put a little bit of signage up that says main entrance. So that the general public knows that the main entrance is, main entrance to the building right now is not on First Street. It's, or on, it's off of Blix. Um, because I ju, I see that if, otherwise, if you're saying that my, my main entrance is off of First Street, then it's gonna be, it's gonna create some issues for you with the ADA.
Uh, that's, that's correct. The code requires, and California accessibility code requires even more than ADA does. We have to signage that, that that's where the entrance is for the accessible space in the main entrance. It's all part of the code that we have to add signage and everything to, uh, to do that. You'll see that on some like new restaurants that are, like McDonald's, for instance, when they remodel, they have to provide, uh, walkway out to the sidewalk. Some entrances will have a sign that says, you know, has the ISA symbol, handicaps under it, if you will, and says, this is the way in because not all of their ways in meet that code. But they have to do that under their current regulation.
Okay, my other question, um, and I don't know if you have considered this, Tony. Is there any way to dress up, uh, to take the focal point off of First Street and make the focal point in the main entrance of your business off of Blix? Um, I'm just trying to think of a way because I, I think what we're, what we're all saying in, in so many ways is we recognize that, you know, that front parking lot i- is jammed full of, of areas with RVs. Um, but it's also something that somebody sees every time they drive on First Street. Um, it's a great selling point, but at the same time, you know, your, your neighbor across the street, um, uh, I can't recall his name.
Larry Grubbs.
Yeah, Larry, uh, Larry's doing all those major improvements to the hardware store.
Right, I'm doing, I'm doing that for Larry also. So we're working both sides of the street.
Yeah, I, I'm just thinking that, that it would be nice to find a way for you guys to do some sort of compliment to what you're doing, to what Larry's doing, so that it really brightens up First Street. So, um, I, I can't tell you what to do, but, but if there's a way that we could consider a, a hybrid approach like we talked about for that front parking lot a- and, uh, move some of those RVs to, to the back. Um, or, or some way to, to really, 'cause First Street is one of the most well-travelled areas in the whole of Escalon. And so it'd be nice, be a nice way to be able to, to look at that area and, and figure out how we can enhance that in some way. But I, I don't know how we can do that at this point.
Commissioner, the, the only issue, the only issue that I see with turning, doing a hybrid approach to that front parking lot is DMV has a requirement that we cannot have any ingress or egress. It has to be a designated display area. And that's why we've come with the variance to keep it street parking with the addition to an ADA spot on the outer boundary of an entrance point to the, one of the parking lots.
So what you're saying is that the DOT will not allow to have some customer parking versus, uh, display area?
You can't have, you're correct. DMV has, it has to be a designated display area and no traffic or parking can happen where people are walking and looking at RVs.
And just to be clear, uh, DMV, Department of Motor Vehicles, 'cause I think Sean might have said, uh, DOT, like Department of Transportation.
Right.
Uh, well, is that California or is that national?
California.
I'm not sure on that, but during our DMV inspection, our signs have to be so big and we have to have a designated secure display area, roped off and only have that as a designated display area.
Okay, just for comparison sake, I'm just looking at, um, Don's RV Center in Series.
Right.
They have RVs everywhere, you know, it's, it's, uh, definitely a lot less, uh, it's a lot more congested than what you have, but, uh, I don't know, just, just look for Don.
And Don's has the wrought iron fences. You come in with the display area to the left, you pull right into their, their front roll-up doors there and then it kinda goes off to the right and they're still kind of a fence. They do, I mean, we can push the limits of that, you know, with, with some parking and sometimes we bring a truck in. But if we're to, to, um, agree to that, DMV would have an issue with it. We would, we would get, we would get cited for that.
Tony, I think in the, in the long run, when the commissioners, that I think there's a way to, you know, make it mo- more enhanceful, uh, to lead people to where we're gonna put the ADA and main entrance, which really is the main entrance to the place. Whenever I go there, any of the customers, you basically park and then walk in the display. The front building is a display building, you know, it's, it's not what it used to be. And basically, that's how you get into the building. So I think it's a matter of, yeah, we can propose some things to the city staff of, of how to make it, uh, maybe more obvious that way, if that's the right word. But, uh, there, there's, you know, there's a number of other safety issues that Tony hasn't really alluded to that you needed to take care of, you know. The, you know, cars back up at the tracks in the front of that front driveway on First Street. Uh, there's a lot of, there is a lot of traffic and, um, people pulling in and out. I mean, I used to do it when, 'cause I, I actually bought my house lot from Brian Greer. So I used to do it all the time when he still had the business there. And it, it's a, it's a tough sell even at that. So I think it actually works a lot better, in, in my lowly opinion, to have it come around back with Tony's proposal and make it work that way and try to enhance that people know to go there.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying that, I mean, I myself, uh, have experienced it and I've heard a few, uh, fellow Escalonians say, man, that, that RV place is awesome. But how the hell do you get in there?
Yeah, yeah.
So.
I agree, I would agree with you.
And so I, I think it would be, it would be prudent that if, if we're going through all of this, that we make it very predominant. How, how the hell you get in there, you know? Uh, from, from an accessibility standpoint, from a, from a, just a, you know, I, I'm gonna browse, uh, I'm gonna browse the RVs now and look, they have a separate service entrance. I'm gonna go down here to the other end of Blix because that's where my service location is. So, um, we obviously don't wanna turn it into the used car feel, new used car lot feel, but at the same time, we, we really need to make sure that we address main entrances, path of travel and, um, beautification, if you will.
And the, and like Norm is, and Norm is addressing there, we're trying to now getting that back portion. I mean, look at this drawing that's up on the screen right now. We used to only have that front building and that front lot with just down the middle, 'cause Valley Entry is still in back. So we just kind of, and, and had that approach to it. But now that we're gonna get that whole back, I want a more center entrance so that we're not walking down the tube effect. Once they say, oh, I want the three-three-six RL, oh, that's all the way out in the back forty. Follow me and we'll talk for fifteen minutes while we walk back there. So I'm trying to get that more of a, a center approach and I, I respect your, your comments and, um, appreciate them that getting somebody to, to be able to find their way in there better. Like I said, when we came to this property, I never knew this business would go to business. This all was an idea. I started with two cars in a warehouse in, um, Oakdale, hence the name of the company. And my passions, RVs, uh, and it just grew to this. So with Norm's advice, having that center entrance is where we've kinda bought into it. And that's why the ADA spot, you know, having it back there. And then you can come right into the front display area. We'll know they're there. We have triggers that we know when people are there. Don't tell anybody. And so, um, we can greet them and we have a whole different approach of greeting our customers. But I like that center approach that Norm is, has presented to me and it makes a lot of sense.
Well, just, uh, and I'm not gonna belabor this point much more, um, because I have a tendency to be well-winded. But, um, one of the main things that I'm thinking of also, and Norm, I don't know if you've considered this, is that little rail, um, where when Tony's open for business, he opens up that, that, that rolling gate. Uh, the CASP inspector's gonna have major heartburn over that rail, so, along First Street. So, if you put the ADA accessible entrance in the center, then you could say, "Oh, yeah, they're coming in over there", because otherwise they're gonna, you're gonna have to try to figure out a way to make that, um, that rail ADA accessible and, uh, yeah. It, uh, it can be a challenge.
I appreciate that comment and you're right, we're dealing, dealing with that. I, you know, I do public schools, so fifty percent of my business, so I deal with the accessibility issues every day on existing pieces of property. So, we're gonna work with them on it and I think you'll find that we get it worked out really well. Uh, that's about all I can tell you until we really solve the issues. Um, I think they, we're working the same direction you're talking about.
Okay, Steph, this is just a question, uh, and then I will stop rambling. Um, but, oh, we have the, um, the cyclone fence, the vinyl slats along Blix and along Rice Way. Um, would it, would it be acceptable to the municipal code if Tony were to install some sort of fabric along the wrought iron, along First and along Blix to kind of hold his storage behind there so that it doesn't create an issue? Um, and it's, uh, it's more attractive to those, uh, people that are passing by on First Street.
Do you mean in, in lieu of the slats?
Yeah, in lieu of the slats, because you can't really put the slats in, in between the, no, I'm just, I'm talking at that front parking lot, Norm. Um, on First and Blix, at that front parking lot, right now it's wrought iron. And it doesn't make, doesn't make sense to do vinyl slats. And I don't think you can unless you put cyclone fence behind, with slats behind wrought iron. But I'm trying to see if, if we can put some sort of, uh, fabric, hide the trailers behind some sort of fabric, so they're not as glaring when you go down First Street. Um, kind of hidden behind the fence, if you will.
I can't speak for Tony, but I mean, but my thoughts are, is that, you know, I know the statements have been made in the report that we have that wrought iron fence, which of course was up before Tony got involved in this. But, um, and landscaping is behind it, you know. The wrought iron fence, you can see the landscaping well. It's not in front, obviously, it's behind the fence. But I think if you go and try to put fabric on that, I think you're just gonna close the whole place off and it's not gonna look near as nice as it does now where we have green plants behind the fence. That, that's just my opinion.
Okay.
I, I would stay away from it as an architect, but again, I have to defer to the city.
This is Diana. And, yeah, Commissioner Strowman, um, we allow the fabric, like on construction fencing, on a temporary basis? Because the fabric is considered temporary. It's not something that we would allow on a permanent basis.
Okay.
I don't think it would be safe either.
Okay.
I wanted to make another note, just a, a side mention, um, because we got to calling the inspection that, um, Mr. Frakine's gonna get on Thursday as a CASP inspection. It's not an official CASP inspection as a technical term. That's very thorough, very detailed. Um, very, they get a very big report that goes with it. They get, um, legal benefits, like lit- litigation benefits that come out of CASP inspection. He's not getting the full CASP inspection. And the person coming out is a consultant who is a CASP inspector, so we're gonna, we call it like an ADA evaluation. They're gonna cover a lot of the same things, but it, I just wanted to clarify that it's not an actual CASP inspection. It's more of an ADA evaluation.
Great, thank you, everybody. Um, Commissioner Strowman, were you, did you have anything else to add?
Nothing further, Chair.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Um, if nobody else has any questions for Tony, um, if I had the silence, I'll say then the answer's no. So, uh, at eight forty, we'll close the public hearing.
Are there anybody opposed?
Excuse me?
Is there anybody from the audience opposed?
Uh, any, anybody from the audience, uh, opposed? Any other comments? Okay, with that, we will, uh, again, close the meeting at eight forty. Um, so at this point, um, is there any motions to approve, uh, portions of this project? Or, uh, or the project as staff, uh, recommends?
Chair, I would like to just, uh, kinda give our fellow commissioners on the, one of the conditions for approval, and that is the exterior building enhancements. Um, as Commissioner Willis reiterated a short time ago, why would we force Tony to do some sort of exterior building enhancements when you can't even see the front of the building? Um, that, that seems a little bit redundant to me. Um, but, you know, if, if, if by this, on Thursday, if it turns out that, that now the front of the building actually has to be on that front parking lot, then I think it's something that we need to consider. But, but at the same time, the, the front of the building is so far back off the street that it doesn't really make sense to, to ask, uh, Tony to do any sort of exterior building enhancements because how can I see it anyway? The same thing with the, the landscape border wall. I mean, I understand that's the municipal code and, and that's, that's why we are planning commissioners, but at the same time, why would we expect, uh, a business in the, in the area? Or, and not only business, but Tony is a resident as well, to afford thousands of dollars and exterior building enhancements to roll up and, uh, landscaping borders. When, when we're gonna see it in the first place? Those are just my thoughts.
Commissioner Strowman, this is Diana. I just wanted to chime in because your point is valid. Um, when the staff support was written and based on the original supplemental, um, everybody was assuming that the front of the building is that First Street side. Um, but through our discussions tonight with the, with the business owner and the architect, Mr. Wilson, it seems like the front of the building is kinda now being transferred, um, to that west side of Building A. Um, in which case, staff would kind of go along with the, um, thinking that you had of maybe enhancing that center area to make that appear more of the building entrance. Um, so Dominique, I don't know if you agree with what I'm thinking, but I would think that since the First Street side of Building A, based on conversations tonight, seems like maybe it's going to be just a, a storage area, a rear storage area, and then the front of the building is being moved to what was the back of the building. Um, so I would not think that building enhancements on the First Street side would be necessary because it is gonna be covered with trailers if that's allowed as just the storage area and the public entrance being moved to the west side of Building A. I would think of maybe some enhancements to the, wherever the front main entrance is going to be.
So if the planning commission was to move forward with requiring, uh, those exterior building, um, relief requirements or features, um, then we would want to update the language, uh, to say, you know, exterior building architecture, arc- architecture relief feature requirements for the mi- for the front of the building or the, the entrance of the building.
To indicate the front of the building.
Yeah, entrance of, of the building or wherever the front entrance is, the main entrance.
It could be an awning like what's on the First Street side.
Um, it could, I mean, as long as it fits in with what the code, uh, requires, which is over on page. Um, there's some language in there. Um, page three, undersite and architecture. And then there was some additional, um, language.
I know, Diana, and, uh.
And that's if the planning commission wants to move forward with that.
I, I know that we're not, we, you know, we can't get into the weeds, but we're talking a metal building with metal siding. What kind of site and architecture enhancements are you thinking about for that, um, improvement, if you will, based on the condition of approval?
Sure, we, this is Diana. We, uh, we typically leave that up to the business owner and the architects to come up with something in their price range that works. Um, Mr. Wilson, the architect, goodness, this is what, third, fourth building that we've worked on together. He's got really good ideas. Um, he's done light fixtures, awnings, contracting trim. They have like a, a foam, foam, a panelized, a foam panel that they kind of put around the base and they either spucko it or put the faux fake rock on it. Um, there are different things that can be done to enhance, enhance the metal building.
Thank you. Can I, can I, this is Tony, can I enter deck real quick and ask a question?
Sure.
Uh, yeah.
Yep.
Instead of, because it is a metal building in its nature, instead of putting like a rock on the front, um, we are gonna do improvements to the exterior of the buildings, of course approved by the city eventually, but with this whole project, we're taking on quite a bit of, uh, expense. So eventually, in over a three-year period we plan on it, would it be acceptable to almost do a wainscoting in a different color instead of an actual elevation on the exterior of the building, um, along the bottom edge or something to, uh, keep from having to put something on the front and then if we go and paint it and not working and going through all that expense initially?
Tony, are you, I'm just checking to understand, correct, you do plan to do, um, exterior modifications to the building, but in the meantime, you wanted to just paint a differing color until such time that the exterior improvements are done?
Just like a, just like a wainscoting, you know, a three, three foot up, just like an, another elevation would be, but I'm not, I'm not committing to do it, but I'm always improving. So I have no plans at this point to do anything, so I don't wanna be, uh, required to do it. But the buildings will never look tacky. Our establishment will always look professional and upgraded, but it's gonna have to be over a period of time and, and, um, affordability. But just in the meantime, if you're looking for something to attract people in that corridor between the two buildings, maybe doing a separate color of a stripe down each side of the building to bring it out. You know, maybe something blue or the red trim that's at the top, do like a brick red, three feet up, just to kind of attract them and go, "Oh, well, this looks like a, a different place." I mean, thoughts have gone through my head to putting welcome in pavers or a, a, uh, you know, a brick, uh, across that front gate. So when it's open, they go, "Oh, well, that's obviously where we go in." So there's a lot of ideas going through my head, but I have no plans and I don't wanna be required to. It's just an idea to give us the flexibility when we do do it.
Sure.
May I say something?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, first off, I can only deal with what I have in front of me. You know, what, what somebody may wanna do later on is something they may wanna do later on. I, I, uh, a- and the other commissioners can chime in on this. Again, I've driven that whole area there and, uh, i- i- if, uh, the RV dealership wasn't concreting the rear yard, we wouldn't be having the discussion, one. Two, the city's been very good working, uh, with, uh, Mr. Frakine on the parking. They've, uh, put up, uh, two-hour parking, because they acknowledge the parking is at a premium in that entire area there. It, the whole area is ten pounds and a five pound. So, um, I, I would say that i- i- if we hadn't gone to the concrete in the back, everything would've stayed the same. And if, if there was some market difference, I think maybe the city would've said something to, uh, the RV, uh, company by now, Diana. And, uh, again, after seven years, we're putting in a concrete back pad just to store RVs. And so, um, I, I, I look at overdoing the neighborhood. When I look at the, the fueling station and I look at Bennett and Showoff Motorsports, you know, whether, what would you actually do? I think, uh, this project, which I'm, I, I'm happy to see, uh, is no better, no worse than those, um, a- at this time. And so if you're going to go ahead and talk wainscoting or, or some other kind of facade enhancement there, uh, one, it isn't in this variance, so I don't wanna even talk about it. And, and two, um, yeah, we should deal with it in front of us.
Yeah, this is, this is Mark. Uh, yeah, I'm at the same, uh, uh, as Commissioner Danziger says, if, you know, I think it would be very clear, uh, to us if the buildings were in a state where we would require some upgrades. I hate to put that, that cost of, um, of, of doing building upgrades just because we're, we're paving, uh, pa- paving a lot. Um, I don't, uh, at, at this point, just looking at the, the type of building they are and what type of business it is, I, I, my feeling is they seem totally appropriate. And, and if Tony wants to come back at, at a, at another point, uh, and point in time to, um, to do something, that, that's great. Um, and certainly would be appreciated, but I have a hard time making that a requirement of, um, of, of this project.
Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion. I would like to make a motion to, um, well, actually, hold on, my first, I have to, I would like to, uh, make a motion that the findings are required for section seventeen point five four, site and architecture, and section seventeen point five seven and the variances. Um, however, I would like to, uh, remove the course for approval. I would like to remove the variance for the thirty-three inch perimeter landscape border. I would like to remove the exterior building enhancement variance. And I would, um, would like to, and I don't, I'm looking for staff to provide some answers here, how we deal with the roll-up door advertisements, um, can't really pronounce it, but how do we deal with that at a later date?
So Commissioner Strowman.
I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead. Um, what I was just going to say is, is the items that you're talking about, you're saying remove, but they're variance requests, so you actually want to approve them, correct? Because that's what he's, he's requesting of those items?
Oh, so he's requesting a variance saying that he does, that we don't wanna do those items?
Yeah, he's requesting a variance, um, he wants to be able to continue the use of the front area of the dealership as the, the display area of the RVs. Um, he wants to be able to have the employee parking, uh, located in the back. He wants to have the landscaping requirement reduced to the thirty-three inches, which is consistent with what is there existing. Um, and when required, put in that landscaping when that fence is, is removed as a, as opposed to in, uh, installing it when there's a fence up that screens it. Um, and then he wants the exterior building architecture and relief features, uh, removed or waived from the project. And then he's asked, uh, to, to be allowed to add advertisement materials to the buildings.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I would like to remove my motion to the table.
Sorry, I was on mute. Okay, fair enough.
I'd like to make a motion, if I may.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner.
Okay, I, um, make a motion that we approve variance A, using the front area of the dealership for display, but eliminating the second sentence. I would like to vote approval or nominate for approval B, allowing the employee parking in the rear, but then put the ADA parking between Buildings A and B. I'd like to approve number C, reducing the landscape requirement. I'd like to appro- or nominate approval of D, uh, waiving the exterior architecture. Maybe with the qualification that some awning or signage be put above the, uh, handicap area and the main entrance for the office. And then eliminate E.
Okay.
I just wanted to clarify in your motion, because on C, they're requesting the reduction to thirty-three inches and requesting that the landscaping and. and requesting that the landscaping installment is deferred until they change that cyclone fencing to something else where the landscaping can be seen. So if, if you also want to approve the deferment, if you could add it into your motion.
Yes, I'd like to add the, the deferment in number C.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, the reason that I did, I removed my motion from the table is because Commissioner Willis uh has a much more eloquent way of speaking exactly what I was thinking and what she just mentioned and what I was thinking. So thank you, Commissioner Willis. With that, I would like the second for motion.
Okay, great, thank you. Uh, so we have a uh motion and a, a second. Um, all those, since we're virtual, so I will say all those, or all those opposed, say nay. Okay, uh, with that, motion would be passed, five, nothing.
Should I add about finding the project exempt under C plus?
Yes, we'd like to add that into your motion, so we'll go ahead and include all those items as individually defined uh by Commissioner Willis, as well as items one through five of the recommendations of staff, which include the opening and closing of the hearings, making the findings in accordance with our site and architecture and variance requirements, and find the project sequo exempt, along with uh authorizing staff uh to file that notice of exemption, and then approve the application with the conditions of approval as below. And those were modified according to the changes that were presented in the motion on the variances. Those would, those will be updated to reflect those.
Thank you.
Real good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and thank you, Tony, appreciate it, presentation.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Norman.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, continuing on, um, next up is administrative matters.
We have none.
None tonight, okay? Um, well, a little odd here, but matters presented from the audience, uh, I'll just read it. At this time, the public may address the planning commission on any non-agendicized items, item that is within the authority of the commission. Speaker is limited to a maximum of five minutes, unused time may not be yielded to another speaker. The determination of whether an item is within the authority of the commission is a discretionary decision made by the commission chair. Are there any matters to be presented by the, uh, from the audience?
Chair, uh, this is Tammy, I just wanted to share, there was a comment posted on our YouTube streaming um, from someone that said, I would eat off of Tony's shop floor. Um, I've been, I've never seen a business kept so clean and or, and orderly. So anyway, just to contribute to how Tony says he kept his business, I just wanted to share that, I just noticed that, so.
Uh, real good, that's, it's good to see, uh, good to see people are watching. Uh, okay, um, any staff communications?
Um, I'm trying to think of what's going on besides everything related to COVID. We've had some alterations, uh, temporarily to schedules, um, and so staff itself um has, has split up into team A and team B. Um, so Diana and Jenny and I are kind of all alternating day, uh, alternating days where we're either at alternate site locations or we're working from home. Uh, but if you call our main line or email us, we're there. There might be a, some little delay, or you might not get the person you want to talk to if you call the office, but we all are still available and working, we just, you know, might be in different locations at the time. So, and our, and our office itself is closed to the public, so what we've been doing is, you know, either having people call in, our phone number's posted on the front. Um, and we've been having people schedule appointments for pickup and drop off when it comes to plans and, and such. Um, we are allowing building permits and construction to continue uh in accordance with uh the requirements for the COVID law. And, you know, things are actually moving relatively smoothly, given, given circumstances.
And thank you all for participating in our virtual meeting and being accommodating in that matter.
Thank you.
This is Diana, I have something.
Go ahead, Diana.
All right, I'm, I'm on the phone, so I know I'm a little bit delayed from everyone else. Um, I just wanted to highlight, as we discussed at the last meeting, that two planning commission seats are expiring in June. Uh, so we have put out the councils accepting applications for the planning commission. And requirement to be a planning commissioner is you just have to be a resident of Escalon and a registered voter. So if anyone's interested in applying, uh, or if our current commissioners are interested in reapplying, you can get the application off of our website, or you can call us at City Hall, six nine one, seven four three zero. We can email or mail an application out, and uh the application period closes May first. Um, and then also just kudos and thank you to the planning commission. This is our first remote meeting, and I think everything went really, really well. Um, so thank you, planning commission, you guys were flexible, you adapted, and your dedication to helping the businesses and the res, and the residents of the town really shows, so thank you, guys.
Thank you, Diana.
Yeah, thank you, Diana.
Awesome.
Has there been any um, with, with the, the staffing at City Hall, um, you know, with, with, uh, with the COVID, has there been any uh is- issues? It sounds like things are moving along quite, quite well, um.
Yeah, so we're not aware of any staff that has um tested positive or known to have been in contact with anybody that has tested positive at this time. So we've um all managed to stay healthy, uh, lots of cleaning is being done. We should, we, we split, as Dominique said, we did split staff, and so there's cleaning every day um before everybody goes home, and um our public works is doing the same, they kind of changed their schedule. Um, and they've split into teams also, so just taking our precautions and trying to stay safe. Um, lots of, for myself, lots of phone calls with OES and um information being thrown our way, but um for overall, I think for Escalon, we're doing well.
Great, that's good to hear. Okay, uh, a- anything else from staff?
No, not that I can think of right at this moment, I mean, a lot of the projects that we've got move in, um, are moving, so um, no, not at this time.
Okay, all right, thank you. Um, so finally, uh, Commissioner Communications, um, we start with Commissioner Castellanos?
Uh, nothing.
Okay, thank you, uh, Commissioner Willis?
Yes, two things, staff, um, you said projects were going, but what about Orlando's? Where does that stand?
So Orlando's, the last uh thing we had heard was back in January, that they were in escrow, uh, moving forward with, with transfer of ownership of the property. Um, we haven't had an update since then, so we can reach out and ask them um how, how things are going, but I haven't heard anything, and Diana, have you heard any updates since January?
We, we've had several updates, but it was kind of all the same update, that we're still in escrow, we're still in escrow. The last I remember, I think they were trying to close escrow by the end of March, but I haven't heard if that happened or not.
We did get the, the liquor license application.
That's right, we did receive a liquor license application for the, for the property.
Okay, thank you. And then what about Lear Village? Um, if we're assessing them applying for something in the past, and then, I don't know if they're deemed essential, I don't know if they're doing anything these days, but is there any uh, any way of furling that for the city?
Um, I had actually spoken to Tammy about that, um, and we're going to uh ask, ask council for direction on that, since it is an agreement that he has uh with, with the city council, so that will be done on Monday's meeting.
Okay, because tonight, the applicant tonight, we're encouraging him to stay in business and get a good business going. I'd hate to penalize somebody else who's already in the way of getting his business here in town.
We will pa, we will definitely pass that on.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, uh, Commissioner Strohman?
Uh, good evening, Commissioners, um, obviously, I'm joining the call this evening uh because my vacation that I had planned for this week uh was ca, was postponed. And so uh, we're go, as a family, we're going to try again for uh June. Uh, so if we have a June meeting, I may not be present, but we all see. The.
You could always postpone, yeah.
Uh, um, I'm hopefully going to be at the happiest place on earth, and uh emphasis on hopefully, um, after this shelter in place, ooh, I think we all deserve a trip there. But the other thing that I have is uh two things. One is, um, staff, I think you're, you're well aware, but uh regarding Commissioner Willis's comment for Lear Village residential construction, um, as long as it's not in the Bay Area, is considered an essential service under the governor's order. So um, I'm not sure what the contract is with Mr. Lear, but um, by all means, you can force, as, as long as you have it in the agreement, you could do a force majeure, uh, which basically forces him to continue work. Um, but that's a decision for the city to make, not, not me as a planning commissioner. Um, the other thing is, uh, I am currently filling out my application to reapply to the planning commissioner, as a planning commissioner, but I, I wanted to get some dates clarified from staff. Uh, that is, uh, when did Chair Sarkozy and I join the planning commission, was that twenty sixteen?
Uh, four years ago, they're four-year terms, so yeah, twenty, twenty sixteen, June of twenty sixteen.
Okay, and then um, I served as vice chair twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, and then chair in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, correct?
Um, we would have to double-check the files to confirm that. We can, we can look up that information for both of you, um, and, and get that out to you so you can add that to your report, or to your application.
That would be great.
I can verify the dates, because I had to sit there.
Man, I love the version of from you, Commissioner Danziger.
I'm glad you guys are on separate ends here. Separate you two.
We'll get that information out to both of you.
Okay, um, my other item is, um, while I, and I mean this truly, uh, I miss seeing all of you in person, I wish we were at City Hall, including you, Commissioner Danzinger.
Thank you.
I, uh, but, you know, our health and safety is of the utmost importance, and so while we're all dealing with this little delay, I think uh we'll definitely come out uh stronger on the other side. And so, um, my last item, and, and Tony, you're still on the call, I see, I, I don't know if you're listening, but.
I'm with.
Okay, for, please pardon the uh banter back and forth with Commissioner Danzinger. We uh, and myself, believe it or not, we have a lot of, at least I know, I have a lot of respect for him. I don't know if he has the same respect for me, but, you know. But I really wanted to make it a point to, for those uh constituents that are out there listening, that, and I posted this on Nextdoor, but we really need to make sure that we support our local Escalon businesses at this time. A lot of our businesses um do a lot of things to help out the community. Um, you know, through sponsorships, through uh Babe Ruths and the soccer leagues, and uh a lot of community activities, and it's important that uh our residents continue to support those businesses through these rough times. Uh, last but certainly not least, want to give a really big shout out to staff, um, to Tammy and to Diana, and to Dominique and Jenny, to keep things rolling. Uh, because, you know, other communities aren't able to kind of work with us on the fly, and it, and it's really, it's wonderful to be able to live in this community and keep our community going despite this shelter in place. So, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, uh, Commissioner Danzinger.
Thank you, um, I'd like to echo uh some of the, the thoughts from the other commissioners. Uh, I think the staff put together a really nice agenda and reports, I'd like to thank all of you. Um, I'd like to thank uh, uh, Tony Fracken for coming to us, uh, and, and going through these proper procedures. It's really good to see uh companies in town do that, you're a very welcome business uh in our community. You fit into a very odd shaped lot, so uh, thank you very much. Um, I also uh would like to hope everybody would stay uh healthy and through these tough times and these uh in-place orders and what have you, it's, it's a drag on all of us, but uh essential. And last, but not least, I want to thank uh Commissioner Strohman, as I always enjoy his input, his expertise in, in the fields when we're looking at these projects. I, I learn a lot, and uh, I kid him because uh we have similar personalities, but uh, thank you, sir.
You're welcome, Kurt, and I miss you, buddy.
All the love. All right, uh, thank you.
By the way, Mr. Chair, just for the record, Commissioner Danzinger and I are not, um, we are within, we're in other rooms, we're, we're uh actually at a undisclosed location. So we're not practicing social distancing at this time, so, just kidding. Wow.
Okay, well, with that, uh.
You know, that's all, I'm just, just trying to make enjoyment out of it, because we're, we're all dealing with it as best as we know how.
Yeah, that is the truth, um, yeah. Uh, so for me, I certainly want to um thanks staff again, another great, uh, great report and a lot of background. I particularly, um, you know, enjoy the, the, the history of these, these projects. Uh, they certain, some of them go back uh quite far, uh, before records were even kept, it seems like, in some of them. So I know that's not, that, that's not an easy, uh, quick and easy task to do, so the background really helps and it's appreciated. Um, a quick little um shout out, just seeing a lot of um police patrols, just kind of cruising around. I think that's, uh, it's great for the community, just to have a, a presence um out there. Um, appreciate that, and likewise, just everybody stay safe, and uh as we deal with all this, hopefully, you know, for the, the shorter than longer term, uh, because we've got a vacation in June too, that hopefully is not have to be rescheduled. So that's uh, that's all I had.
Good job, everybody.
Great job. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, uh, so with that, uh, nine fourteen, um, we will adjourn for the, uh, for the month of April. Thank you, everybody.
You, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, goodbye.
Bye.
Night, everybody.
This conference is no longer being recorded.